We'll call the meeting order. First, on the agenda, Marla, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Bitner. Commissioner Conling.
Here.
Commissioner Jarrett.
Here.
Commissioner Monson.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Rich.
Here.
Commissioner Streifel.
Here.
Commissioner Zurov.
Here.
And Chairman is not here.
All right.
We have a quorum.
The first thing on our agenda tonight is obviously the approval of the March 12th minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections to those minutes?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Pull your mic a little closer.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prove nay. Motion passes. And we'll move on then to the consent agenda. There are no items there. Correct, Marla? So then we'll go to the public hearing agenda. The first one would be the special use permit request. Marla will go over that for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a special use permit application request from Jason and Jenny Schatz. The location is 9100 162nd Avenue Northeast. Croft Township, Section 35, Southeast, One Quarter, Southeast, One Quarter. The project size is a 620 square foot manufactured home. They would like approval of the special use permit to set the manufactured home on their property, which already has a single-family residence. And they would like a due pass recommendation to the Board of Burley County Commissioners. The public hearing notice was posted in the Bismarck Tribune, March 22nd and 29th. Surrounding property owners were notified March 26th. And it was posted on the Burley County website on March 27th. Jason and Jenny Schatz requested a permit on February 9th to set a small manufactured home on their property. Their property contains 39.86 acres with a single-family home, accessory building, and a farm building. They would like to set the manufactured home to use as an office. Because the manufactured home contains a kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom, it could be considered an additional residence according to the Burley County zoning ordinances. The Schatzes were advised to apply for a special use permit allowing them to set the manufactured home on their property. Croft Township was notified of the Schatzes' request. Croft Township is an organized township which has zoning and building jurisdiction in Burley County. They recommend passing the special use permit. They have no concerns regarding the manufactured home or the proposed use. Staff findings. Article 8 Special Uses states, "The Board of the County Commissioners finds it necessary to require that certain uses, because of unusual size, safety hazards, infrequent occurrence, effect on surrounding areas, or other reasons, be reviewed by the County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Burley County Commissioners prior to granting of a building permit or certificate of occupancy, and that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners be and are hereby given limited discretionary powers to granting of such permit or certificate." The request to use the manufactured home as an office space on a property with a single-family home is an infrequent occurrence which qualifies for a special use request. Burley County ordinances, Article 3 Definitions. Dwelling, single-family describes a single-family dwelling unit as having a minimum living space, square footage of 900 square feet. The manufactured home is 620 square feet. It does not qualify as a single-family dwelling unit. The special use permit would be required to set the manufactured home. All requirements for applying for the special use permit have been completed by the property owners. Plan use of the building is appropriate for this location. And Croft Township has been consulted and they recommend a due pass to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommendations. The petition for the special use permit meets all administrative requirements of the Burley County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the special use and giving a due pass recommendation to the Board of Burley County Commissioners. As always, you can approve it, approve it with conditions, deny it, or table it for more information. And I put up there the location of the mobile home.
Mr. Chairman? Marla, I just have, I noticed it's 39.86 acres. And it sounds fine to me. I'm just saying, is that significant that it's under 40 acres? Is 40 acres a threshold for some of these things?
Well, 40 acres or more. You don't need a building permit for like an accessory building if it's for farm use. But the significance on this is that it is a manufactured home with a kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, and could be, in the future, used as a residence. And that's why we requested it.
Chairman.
Commissioner.
So with that, you know, Burley, so Burley County is responsible for issuing septic permits. Are they applying for a septic permit with this? I mean, are you guys going to be requiring a full, I mean, you know, a full septic system that meets the requirements, you know, on a per-bedroom basis with a drain field sized accordingly and all that stuff? Or are they kind of trying to skirt by that by saying it's, oh, it's an office?
They haven't applied to us for a septic permit. And that wasn't what we were looking at today. We're just looking at whether they would be allowed. And like we said, it could be a single-family residence.
Correct. Well, correct. I mean, it's just one of those things, oh, we're putting it in as an office. Well, who says I can't just go sleep in my office or have the in-laws come and sleep at the office?
Or a farmhand.
Or a farmhand or have somebody live out there. And that's my, my only concern on, you know, because there's, there are plenty of other options, cheaper options, you know, with those like, those, like a true office trailer or something like that, you know, like a construction office trailer. That would be a lot cheaper than even a cheap mobile home to utilize as an office. So I, I mean, I'm kind of, this isn't really passing the smell test for me as far as that goes. Especially because I'm talking sewer. So, I mean, generally, I don't have an issue with it, but, I mean, I'd kind of like to see an appropriately sized septic system placed with something like this if that's what they're trying to skirt. So. And I, because I get it, that's, you're talking, that's 15 to 20 grand right now. I get it. But if you're going to do it, do it right. And if you're not, don't do it.
Yes.
And my, my comment was going to be exactly the same. You know, without having sewer applied here, I'm uncomfortable approving it at all. And so I don't know the rules on if Burley County does the sewer permits, if that's a state thing or how that works.
Mr. Chair. As a part of the certificate occupancy, they'll have to have sanitation provisions for this building. As part of your motion, you may consider having it as contingent on an office only. It's not specifically for residential use. He's, the, the owner of this is in the trucking business. And he just wanted an office for, for his wife to work in to do all the paperwork and stuff like that. But if they want to change it to a single-family residence, that would not be allowed.
But there's nothing that need to be changed for it to be occupied as a single-family residence is kind of the point I'm getting at.
Right.
She's going to want to use the kitchen, she's going to want to use the bathroom rather than going back to the house.
Yeah, that's, that's appropriate use as far as I'm concerned because it has a kitchen. But to allow a second family there is the point. It's not, we do not, we can revoke the special use permit if we find out that there's another family living on this property.
But how do you, how do you, how do you, as the regulating authority and probably the person to be doing that, how do you regulate it, Mitch?
By this approval of this, as part of the approval.
Special use permits can be pulled at any time if there's.
Well, I think as Mitch indicated, you could indicate it's for office use only as opposed to residence. And I think that's what you were suggesting, that could be part of the motion for approval.
Where the condition could be with a properly sized sanitary system.
That's my, that's kind of where I'm leaning because I'm kind of reading between the lines. Unless we have somebody here to speak on behalf of the applicant tonight.
Well, and I think.
It would take some very hard convincing.
If it's got a kitchen, and you would assume that maybe she not only is going to keep the books there, but she's, I would agree, she might have a refrigerator in there and have some food, so she could cook her food. And she's going to need a septic system in order to handle the waste, the kitchen wastes. Any other comments? Any more questions? Mr. Conling.
Chair, Commissioners, Marla. Can't really tell the distance. I mean, it's their liability and things, but trailers aren't, are known for, if they catch fire, they go quick. And the proximity to the building on the map, I mean, that's a lot of, even in trailer parks and that, there's distance between trailers. Any concerns with that?
Well, we would require them to be set when they set the mobile home. They would be required to set it so far away from the building. That's not to scale. That's just to kind of show you where they're planning on putting it. You know, to give you an idea, they're planning on putting it by the big building. And I apologize, I didn't check to see if that accessory building has septic already, you know, if it has a septic. That would have been good to know.
Yeah, looking through the written part and everything, there weren't any dimensions. So I thought it, a benefit to ask at least.
Yeah, they just said it was 620 square feet.
Well, regardless if it has septic, that accessory building has septic or not, there would need, there need to be modifications done to the existing system to add additional drain field.
Commissioner Bitner?
I think that was Nick.
Oh, maybe.
Mr. Chair. The building codes call for a 10-foot setbacks on residential buildings. Fire code is.
Any other questions of Marla? Comments?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the special use permit with the condition.
We need to have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
You're right. We need to set the public hearing.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
Okay.
You're correct.
At this point in time, we would go ahead and open it up for public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak to the special use permit, you would approach the podium and state your name and please sign in on the register. Anybody here want to speak to the special use permit? One more time. Anybody want to speak to the special use permit? Very done, we'll close the public hearing then. Now. Commissioner Monson.
Take her away.
I would move to approve the special use permit with the condition that a properly sized septic system must be installed with this unit.
And.
And give a due pass recommendation to Burley County Commissioners.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Zurov, first by Commissioner Monson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Marla?
The motion is to approve the special use with the condition that a proper septic system is applied for. Second.
Applied and installed.
Applied and installed.
Applied and installed. Okay. Commissioner Conling.
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov.
Yes.
Commissioner Streifel.
No.
Commissioner Jarrett.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rich.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Patrick.
Yes.
Okay, one opposed.
So the motion passes?
Motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Article 8 Special Uses. Mitch?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. We have back before you again, data center section, Article 8. It becomes necessary to consider amending the current Article 8 to allow data centers within an I district, industrial district, under a special use permit. Data centers are facilities that contain large amounts of computer systems, IT infrastructure, and use remote storage, processing, or transmission of digital data associated with those computer systems, networks, servers, et cetera. Article 8 ordinance for data centers was presented at the planning commission on July 10th, September 11th. Public hearings were held on November 13th and February 12th. This is a continuance of the February 12th public hearing with the motion at that time to approve failed by a four to three vote. So what you have in front of you in your packets is a revised ordinance. All the sections in there that are highlighted, the definitions, the cryptocurrency data center, cryptocurrency, cryptocurrency farm, server farm, data center, those definitions have changed, high-density load service has been added, owner, a definition of owner has been added, and sensitive properties have been added. The. The next section that was changed is applicability, section I. Data center regulations are, it's highlighted again. Data centers are applicable to data centers, regulations are applicable to data centers requiring consistent electric loads of 50 megawatts or more. Anything less than that is not in this article.
Mr. Chairman, so this will only apply to more than 50 megawatts?
Yeah, we have to come back with one that's less.
300 kilowatt and 20, 150 kilowatt hours per year?
Those are for residential. I put those in there as a category only.
Okay, but only applies to 50 megawatts?
Yep.
That's a pretty big use.
It is. Well, it's not what we're seeing, but in the industry, but yeah, these, we have to come back with an ordinance that is less than 50 megawatts. Because there appears to be, you know, interest in doing data centers in your home. Or in just a small business. Kind of a cottage industry that's coming into play. So that's what this is. The. The next section in the applicability is one point, or I point, one point D is the preliminary plan. At the last meeting, we had Nick, can't think of his last name. He was here from the, from Ellendale. And he, we, we didn't, we just called for a site plan. So we're calling for a preliminary site plan. The, the next section was the. I, section I, point one point D includes the, also the. In that D section, a photometric plan that shows all exterior lighting. For definition of photometrics is, is the measure of light in terms of its perceived brightness to the human eye as measured by a photometer. Next section is in H, I, I 1H is the special, the special use permit will be based on a .001% times total project cost of up to $1 billion. This was discussed at the last meeting. And Ellendale is, is way past $1 billion in their cost. And we could see the same thing here in Burley County. A billion-dollar permit would cost $1 million. Which is not uncommon in the industry. I've issued billion-dollar permits before. For, for building permits. They complained too, so. But it's part of the industry. And 0.001 is not much of a percentage fee. I kept it at $1 billion. If you guys want to cap it at $1 million, doesn't matter to me. This money doesn't go into my pocket. But it's an industry, there, many other jurisdictions in North Dakota has that, have that same scale, permit scale, fee scale. The next section is in. Design standards three. Number one. Has the data, data centers or cryptocurrency data centers shall be set back at least one mile to all sensitive properties as defined, sensitive properties are back to the definitions if you recall. Such as single-family dwellings, a. Schools, churches, synagogues, and other similar religious institutions or structures and public parks is measured from the nearest property line of any of these sensitive properties to the data center's exterior property lines. As you recall, this was changed from half a mile, four to a mile. I'm seeing much higher setbacks. And there's, there's five other counties in North Dakota that have a very similar ordinance to this. I've seen setbacks up to five miles, four miles, two miles. So this is, a mile is, I thought was a fairly good setback distance from these property lines. The other one is, was discussed at the meeting, burying the electrical wires in section three. Our item three in section three. The, we're getting into design standards from the state electrical board and NEC, and that's not our job. It's, I just basically said they will comply with the standards of the North Dakota State Electrical Board and any of its rules or regulations. So if they want to keep it above ground in conduit or however, that's, if it meets NEC and it meets the state electrical board's regulations, then why should we be considered a, you know, part of that consideration? The next one is, I've added generators. The, because of this, because of generators, it was, at the last meeting, you may recall that they stated there's over 60 generators at the Ellendale site, or will be. And they are, they, they're three megawatts each. And a three-megawatt generator is, is a large, large generator. It's 20 feet wide, usually they're 20 feet wide by eight, 20 feet long by eight feet wide, they weigh 39,000 pounds. And they're capable of decibel levels up to 80. And so we had to address some of that for the testing of them and the running of them and all that sort of thing. It's, it's kind of, that's a large amount of generators. I can only imagine what they sound like. And they are important to a data center for its cryptocurrency management because it's a, they're capable of, of creating 100 and, what, 180 megawatts, all 60 of these generators. But they, they want to keep that data up at all times. They'll lose serious data when they have an power outage.
Commissioner Rich. Mr. Chairman, Mitch, you know, I'm looking through the proposed ordinance and at the rear end of it, you've got a different ordinance that relates to a city. Is that just an example of someone else's?
I'll get to that, Commissioner Rich. That's that model ordinance that Nick had suggested we find.
Okay, because they had 80 decimals there and ours is different. I've.
Yeah, that's, that's a model ordinance that was created by the League of Cities. Well, I'll, I'll get to that too. So the generators are in that section 3.3. The generator testing is limited between 11:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Generators use is limited to backup emergency only. These, the, these items here are, I talked to a planner in Colorado about this. She was in a, the city have hired them for their new ordinance review and creations and stuff. And she replied, I sent this ordinance to her to review about the generator system and she came back, stated that it is common ordinance that the time for testing generation, generators is limited to weekday or workday hours, which is what it is. It also is common to state that generators can only be used in backup emergency situations. So there. It's just a simple tester, generators during the day. And weekdays, that sort of thing. The next. I added building permits in section six. At the time of the special use permit, approval of building permit for all proposed structures will be required. Permit information, it'll include applicant name and contact. The applicant must also identify on the application contact information for the owner, owners of record of the property, the occupant or lessee of the property, and the operator of the data center. Some of these guys are contractors, they just build these data centers and they move on. And so we want to know if there's a problem, if there's issues, if we need to get in the building, we need to know who to contact. There are issues, who to contact. As you recall in the definitions, I added, I added the definition of owner. It states, "Any person, agent, operator, entity, firm, or corporation having any legal equitable interest in the property or recorded in the official records of the state, county, and municipality is holding an interest or title to the property or otherwise having possession or control of the property, including the guardian of the state of any such person and the executor or administrator of the state of such persons if ordered to take possession of the real property by a court." So there are many, many ways for owners to be oblique, hard, hard to locate. So that's, we, if we have issues with this and we don't know who to contact, we have to have some information. It's standard for the, standard for the industry. We don't have to reveal that, that name to the public, that's on the building permit. It's privileged, you know, information that we don't just hand out to people. We don't, we didn't want the name on the special use permit. Because then people are going to contact them, that sort of thing. And that's what he was, Nick was saying that that, that's non-starter or something about the application. He did not want anything to do, have to do with the owner's name on the special use permit. Well, we do need the owner's name after this building goes up. Let's see, where am I now?
Number seven.
Yep, the facility will be required to obtain an Indy, North Dakota Department of Biossecurity, that's DQ, permit if they, it should have been a Q. If they discharge water to surface, if they're going to use water to cool these computers and they just run it off the back on the ground or whatever, they're going to need a DEQ permit. Sound, number 11. The operator shall not cause, allow, or permit the operation of any source of a sound which creates at an occupied residential building or defines. creates at an occupied residential building or defined sensitive property as may exist at the time of the issuance of the certificated occupancy to the data center. A sound level that exceeds a daytime continuous sound level of fifty DBAs or a nighttime continuous sound level of forty DBAs, decibels, for any fifteen minute measurement interval unless otherwise permitted. A, the operator shall not cause, allow, or permit the operation of any source of sound which creates a pure tone where the one-third octave band sound pressure level in the band of interest exceeds the rhythmic average of the sound pressure levels for the two adjacent one-third octave bands' correspondent decibel levels as follows. Five for center, five decibels for, of center frequencies of five hundred hertz, five, eight decibels for center frequencies between a hundred and sixty and four hundred hertz, fifteen double decibel levels for center frequency less than or equal of a hundred and twenty-five hertz. A pure tone shall be deemed present at measurements. This deals with a low hum, a low pitched hum.
Mr. Rich.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, where did you get all, this is pretty complicated stuff here.
Yes, it is. It's, it's, it's refining the definition of noise in the ordinance. We have no noise ordinance in Burley County and the only thing that we can follow is century code, which has nothing, it's, it's determined by a nuisance call.
Okay, but where, where did you get this?
I got this from, from other ordinance across the state, adopted ordinances.
Mitch, um, just explain, um, you know, I have some experience in the noise field myself and those are for different frequency levels that come from different types of machines and which may or may not be added to this facility. And the other, the other concern that I had, I mentioned this to Mitch earlier, uh, and on eleven there, Mitch, you talk about the facility, you're talking about forty-five decibels. This is for an existing residence nearby.
Right. Measured from property line to property line.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't have a problem with that if it's, uh, if somebody decides to move in, but the problem is that the background decibel level, A weighted in North Dakota summer between thirty-two and thirty-five and, and.
But I'm sorry, could you, what's the background decibel?
The background level that you can go out and measure out in the rural area where there's no machinery operating or anything at nighttime, it will be about thirty-five, maybe a little less. And so if they're going to build next to an existing residence, then that forty-five might be a little high there. But I think it's okay for it to be there for, uh, in the event, let's say they're away from any existing residence and if somebody decides that they want to build next to that property, that's their problem.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at. That's what I was trying to discuss to early, when we were, you know, upstairs.
That you, Mr. Chair, that you think that forty-five is too high?
In this, for this particular instance, because that's an existing residence. And I think the existing residence is entitled to have a background that would be the normal natural background sound level.
Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman Mitch, uh, it doesn't explain where this is going to be measured from. Is it going to be measured from the property line or from the building itself or where?
From the property line to the property line.
Go ahead, proceed.
Okay. Next is the data, uh, item thirteen, now data center operations shall provide a twenty-four hour emergency contact signage visible at the access entrance. Signs shall include company name, if applicable, owner representative name, telephone number, and corresponding local power company and telephone numbers. Item nineteen, I added the line storm water management plan will need to be included Section four, decommissioning plans, item two, um, I changed original to pre-existing. That was a, it was discussed at that last meeting that decommissioning plan's not needed. It's a industry standard for, for having decommissioning plans for mining, for gravel pits, for, for any large structure, any large facility. The intention of those decommission plans is to remove a building that is no longer usable or intended to be used. It's not, it's not intended to take down a, uh, expensive industrial built concrete structure that's a million square feet. Somebody could use that, somebody would buy that. But there was mention at that Ellendale site that they had turkey barns designed, they were designed, they colored in turkey barns, but I've seen aerial photos and they look like turkey barns. That's what this would be for. Who could use a facility like that? Who could use a shack that was built as a, as a data center? Who could use that after they're done? This is not for a really high-class building, an expensive structure. It's for these, you know, lower, lower cost, um, buildings that are unwanted, the buildings that could blight an area and that sort of thing. It's industry, industry standard, we're not asking for anything new or special here.
Mitch, is there going to be any, um, with your decommissioning plan, is, do I, did I see anything in here on, on, uh, holding, uh? How, how are we going to assure that they are financially prepared to, uh, carry through on the decommissioning plan?
Well, they'll have to, they'll have to provide proof of that, some kind of secure, uh, security or proof that they, usually it's typically two times the cost of the building is an industry standard for a decommissioning plan. It's not that we hold the check, they don't give us a check and we hold it for them. They, they just have, provide a security for that amount and a bond issue or however they want to do it.
Should that be stated in here someplace?
On page four, I think.
Is it on four?
Page four.
I didn't see it.
Financial security, yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-five percent is what it is. Any questions, any more questions from the commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Rich?
I guess the question I have is on the model ordinance, they have a setback of four tenths of a mile. When I look at one mile from any of these listed structures, do we even have a place in Burley County where one could be constructed?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
A mile?
Yes, absolutely.
Direct, direct five miles northeast. Direct five miles northeast.
Before I get into that model ordinance, I would like to discuss the tax revenue, Mr. Chair. There was, um, discussion about how much tax value that'll bring to Burley County. And I'd like to break that down a little bit. The, the only thing that's can be taxed on that is the land in the building. Anything in the building is not taxed. If you can unbolt it and take it out of there while it damaged in the building, it's not taxed. So the value is in the computers, not the building itself, the land of course too. But the, just to break it down a little bit, um, in tax terms, these, these buildings would be viewed as a storage warehouse. And it's a hundred thousand square foot building, which is ten million dollars in tax value, would bring ninety-two thousand dollars a year in taxes. A million square foot building, which is what he's talking about over in Ellendale, that will bring seven hundred and fifty thousand, um, year in, in taxes. Their, their tax lower because they're larger, but that'll bring seven hundred and fifty Ellendale site has two and a half million dollar square foot total or will. So that would be, um, one point eight seven five tax revenue in a year. Large amount, larger tax. But you can also get that million dollars in, in tax value from a hundred lot subdivision or two hundred lot subdivision. These things, you know, nobody's going to want to build near these things. And it's unless the land is so cheap that, you know, that sort of thing for development costs, but you see, you got to relate to the, other things that are comparable in tax value. Um, and now, like, that's all I had, I wanted to talk about that. You've got any questions?
I just got one more comment, Mitch. Um, I just want to give you a background on that, that thirty-two decibels I was talking about, thirty-two, thirty-five.
Yeah.
A number of years ago, when Falkirk Mining was planning to mine closer to Riverdale, uh, we went up there and we measured the nighttime sound level in the town of Riverdale and it was around thirty-five. And so that's why, you know, that's a rural community, it's obviously going to be different in Bismarck, it's going to be a little noisier because of the traffic and, you know, and the stuff that's going on. But these data centers are going to be, especially if they're going to be a mile away from city, city pride to rural, so. And that's, that's my, I just wanted to explain where that number came from. We know what that number is.
Mr. Chair, yeah, the, one consideration I didn't put in here, might discuss right now, is that the measure of the ambient level or sound level before they build, that may should be included in there. I mean, it could be next to the interstate, which has a fifty decibel level already.
Right, I think that might be a good, a good move to do that.
Chair. Chair.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, question for you, question for Mitch. I mean, you'd say thirty-five in a quiet tone, uh, what's ten grain bin heaters, you know, what, what sound level do they run at? Cause I, like grain bin heaters, blowers, cause I, you know, and again, it's, it's kind of, if we're, if we're going to be talking noise on stuff, I've, I've, I've been on farm sites all across the state that, you know, they've got twenty large grain bins and every single one of them have three or four blowers on them and those things go at all hours of the night and during the day they're loud, when they're in operation. I know it's agricultural versus data center, this, that, and the other, but at the end of the day, when you boil it down, it's all noise, right?
Well, but that's the individual owner's decision if he's going to run those things next to his property, that farmer, that's his decision to do that. He can turn them off.
But where are grain bin elevators located typically? Or where, where are grain elevators located in, in, in communities?
Generally, uh, at, at the edge of town usually.
Well, I beg to differ. Garrison, Max, they're all in the middle of town.
Some maybe, but the point is, we, we measured, we, when we measured, we measured Riverdale and that was in, that was in the summer, that was June, July. And, uh, obviously there wouldn't be anything running then. So that is the background radiation or radiation, background noise level.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying if we're talking noise and communities and people and stuff, I mean.
Just so you know, there are communities that have, in fact, many communities in North Dakota have noise ordinances, including the city of Bismarck.
Mr. Chair, we don't.
Burley County.
We do not, we, I don't know how to even start to enforce it. We'd have to have, out of that million dollar permit fee, we'd have to save some money in there to, to hire somebody to determine what it is. I mean, I, we could buy a decibel meter, you know, an audible meter and go out there and, you know. But that's the problem we have with this, is, is that sound, it should be measured after this building is built to make, document it. And it should probably be a yearly analysis of that because it's, we're dealing with sound after the fact. If we're dealing with a nuisance call on, on sound, we're dealing after the fact or the next day going out there. It could be total different atmospheric, atmospheric differences, winds blowing in a different direction, it's colder that day, it's hotter, that sort of thing. And where do you measure it from? Where, you're on a hill, you're in a valley, or, you know, it's, it's all sorts of things that, that are hard to determine. That's why we have this before, before we issue an occupancy permit, we want to measure a, well, actually after the occupancy, when they're up and running.
Well, I'm only pointing out that this particular section, where there's already an occupied residence, that forty-five might be too high, that thirty-five might be a better number. The rest of them, because you're building a mile away from these residents, you're probably not going to have impact of noise at that distance, okay? So this is the only section that I'm trying to point out that could be of concern.
All right, that, you know, I will also point commissioners to, uh, section three, number eighteen. Additional, uh, conditions or specific allowance to this ordinance may be considered in the review and approval of special use permit. It's on page seven.
Yes, Commissioner.
Um, to your point, Commissioner Patrick, um, I actually, my wife and I, uh, we landed in, we were in the new, is Denver Airport, the first week that it opened. And they actually had a little side light where they did an educational piece and they basically said, people were tired of being, living near an airport and there was nothing around it. And now there's a whole lot of people that have moved in. Well, if you buy after an airport's built in the middle of nowhere, that's on you. But if something comes in when you're already established, I mean, there's been a lot of meetings, both at the city and county level, about something new, asking for permission to be in there and they haven't gone through. So it's something valid.
I, I, I agree. I, I, I was at Denver when that, uh, airport was brand new and there was nothing around it and all of a sudden it's crowded. And, and I agree with you that that's on them, they should not have built there, they should have known better. But this is a situation on this particular part of the ordinance where there's somebody already there. And so I'm thinking that that should be at background, but anybody that decides to build next to the place, that's on them again, it's no different than Denver. That's what I'm getting at. Commissioner Rich.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mitch, I, the model ordinance, city ordinance is eighty decibels, that's considerably more. And if you look at the model, what you got at the back there. Eight, eighty decibels in a city.
That was created by.
The League of Cities.
League of Cities and who would, who can, eighty is, is very high, extremely high.
Especially inside a city.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see how that would be allowed in any city. And all the jurisdictions, I sent that out actually. I sent that out to all, all jurisdictions that are part of the Planning and Zoning Association and they all responded in the same way that they would never adopt an ordinance similar to that. That, that was written clearly for, for the people who want to build data centers. It's, I mean, a setback of twenty-one, hundred and twelve feet, one quarter of a mile is, one four tenths of a mile is, I don't know if I can throw a baseball at that one.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments for Mitch? Okay, thank you Mitch.
Yep.
Uh, at this point in time, uh, we would probably want to open up for public hearing, but before we do that, I want to indicate that, uh, comments need to be limited to no more than fifteen minutes and it needs to be new information. And if there's, uh, other information that want, someone wants presented, they should present it in writing so that it can be forwarded on to the county commission for their review if this, um, ordinance is moved forward to the county commission. With that, um, we would open the public hearing and I would ask if there's anybody that wants to speak to the Article Eight Special Uses Data Centers, uh, proposed ordinance. If there is anybody, uh, state your name and, uh, if you are in the room, uh, please approach the podium and sign the roster.
One of you's got to go first.
I promise I will not take fifteen minutes. Just one, I just want to point out one thing, um, I know, um, Mr. Phillips is actually online, he said he's having trouble hearing and he's not being allowed to be in presenter mode, so I don't know how that works or what that looks like, but, um, Nick Phillips?
I put him in as a presenter. I put him in as a presenter. I will check with them back there to see why they haven't opened him up.
Sure. Um, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, uh, my name is Nathan Schneider, I'm the vice president for the Bismarck Man and Chamber EDC. We are the economic development provider for the, for, um, the county of Burley. We are the economic development provider for the, for, um, the county of Burley. Uh, just wanna, just have a couple of comments. I'm not, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure what version of the ordinance I have. There wasn't, the, the agenda packet wasn't online, so I wasn't able to see the, the agenda packet and what was the ordinance, the most updated ordinance was. So if, if there's things that I'm saying that have been changed, um, my apologies. I, I, I'm dealing with the version that I have, just, um, just wanted to point that out. The Chamber EDC, uh, fully understands and supports the ordinances, um, that provide safeguards and, and protect the county. However, we do want to express our concerns about the proposed data center ordinance, which we believe, uh, is overly restrictive, economically short-sighted, and, and out of step with the needs of a, a modern, forward-looking community. Couple of, uh, things that we're a little bit concerned with. We feel like this, this ordinance discourages innovation and economic growth. The ordinance creates significant barriers for companies looking to invest in data centers, artificial intelligence, and digital infrastructure with excessive permitting requirements and high financial security deposits. The message this sends is clear, Burley County is closed for digital business. This is the way that, that economic development is going. These, these data centers are looking at communities across the country. And with this type of ordinance in place, we're, we're sending a message, I believe. Uh, Mitch talked about, um, you know, some of the bad actors, and, and we all are aware of the example of Upin Williston, the Atlas Project, and the issues that they had up there. That's why there's special use permits, that's why there's this commission, that's why there's these meetings, so that you can all decide if, if it's worthy to continue to move on. Let's not put an ordinance in place that's restrictive, that chases away all the good actors, the applied digitals that are coming in and looking at our community. We need to have parameters and safeguards in place, I understand that. But if we're chasing away the good projects by making specific exclusions for, for the bad actors, we, we're just limiting our options. The, the rules are overly broad and unfair. The ordinance lumps together very different types of facilities, data centers, blockchain mining, and AI infrastructure, without distinguishing between their impacts. A small, clean data center is treated the same as a large-scale industrial crypto operation. There, that's not a, a balanced reg- regulation. The, the facility in Williston was a crypto-mining facility. It's the hog barns that Mitch is talking about, it's the turkey farm, the turkey barns that Mitch is talking about. The open-air facilities that are just essentially a gabled roof. The data centers that we're talking, that, that, like, Applied Digital are building, they're closed facilities. They're very highly secured, closed facilities. They're, they're not, they're not the type that are the, the, the turkey farms. Um, the setback requirements are extreme and unrealistic. A one-mile buffer from homes, parks, schools, and churches effectively bans data centers from most of the county. That's not just protective, it's prohibitive. Commissioner Rish talked about it, and yes, there are areas of the county that, that are with, outside of that one mile from a structure. The problem that it is, is that you also, there's also the industrial zoning requirement, that they have to be within an industrial zone, so they either have to get a rezone on an egg, on an egg parcel, or have to be in an industrial parcel that's outside of a mile from a, a structure. Is that ChatGPT? Uh-huh, is that, was that fifteen minutes already? Holy cow. Um, these, these facilities, they're not, they, they don't, they don't want to go into a spot in the middle of nowhere, in, in, in the middle of a mile se- a section that's a mile from, from a, a facility. They don't want to go there. They want to be where the, the power lines are. They want to be clo- in close proximity to power lines. They want to be in close proximity to heavily-traveled roads so that their workers can get to and from. You heard, um, Nick talking about it in his Ellendale facility. They, they want people living in Ellendale because if there's a snowstorm and they can't get to the facility, that costs them. That costs them hundreds, thousands, um, sometimes even more dollars. Um, the process is burdensome and bureaucratic, from requiring market demand studies to revealing customer information. I know Mitch talked about it, that it won't be listed on the special use permit, and it won't be listed on the, the billing permit. It's still something that these companies, there's, there's very few companies that can even be a customer of these large-scale data centers. They, they have teams of legal, of, of lawyers that, um, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna balk at that. They're not gonna want to put their name on stuff like that. Recurring, uh, develop, requiring developers to pay a special use permit fee of point oh oh one of the cost of the project, as well as, uh, post a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of maintenance, a hundred and twenty-five percent for full reclamation before they even break ground, is a level of financial burden that most developers will simply walk away from. That's lost opportunity, lost jobs, and lost tax revenue. Um, I, I know Mitch, um, put the, that was not in the, in the draft ordinance that I had, the, the million-dollar, um, um, cap on the, the max on the, on the special use permit. But even still, a million dollars for these, uh, for these companies to post as, just as a special use permit fee, a lot of times, they'll, they'll just walk away from that. Other counties are, are welcoming data and AI investments with reasonable oversight, yes, but with a spirit of collaboration, this ordinance positions Burley County as an outlier, turning away the, from the very technologies that will define our economy and infrastructure in the next decade. This ordinance is, looks a lot similar to, um, the Williams County ordinance that, that SRF Consulting, uh, wrote for them, um, li- looks very similar. And I know McKenzie County adopted it as well. It's a little bit different environment up there. Um, they're, they're looking at putting data centers at wellheads. They're, small-scale data centers at wellheads. We're, we don't have wellheads here. Um, we're, we're in a completely different environment than, than what Williams County is in. We absolutely can and should set thoughtful standards for development, but that means crafting a policy that protects residents without pushing away progress. Let's aim for fair, balanced rules that allow good projects to move forward while safeguarding community values. Uh, just in closing, I urge you to rethink this ordinance. We, the, the Chamber EDC urges you to think, rethink this ordinance. Other communities are looking at ways to collaborate and sometimes even incentivize data center development because of the increased tax base and high-paying jobs these types of businesses create. Um, it was mentioned at the, the March Commission meeting, uh, that we should not allow business to make, to make the rules. And while we at the Chamber EDC generally agree with that, we also need to be aware that these are, these are typically not, um, local developers, um, citing these facilities. This isn't a, this isn't a shop condo developer that'll work within the ordinance. These are large-scale data center developers that, if they, if they find a path of resistance, if they see hurdles and barriers, they're just gonna go somewhere else. They're gonna go to a different area of the state, they're gonna go to a different county. They may even go right across the border in Kidder County. And so we see the issues that data centers do create with noise and light and dirt, but we don't see any of the benefits. These are tip, um, these are typically developers that have met with a large amount of resistance. Like I said, will simply move on to a different area of the state. Please do not put Burley County at, at a disadvantage. Um, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Rish.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, what kind of jobs are we talking about? I understand these data centers can be all various sizes, but, you know, are we talking, the Ellendale one is exceptionally large, but a typical data center. I know we'll have construction jobs and whatnot, but after it's constructed, about how many jobs on average would they have? Any guess?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Rish, that would probably be a really good, uh, question for, for Mr. Phillips to answer. I don't have an answer for you. I would venture to guess that there's a large range of the types of business. If you have a crypto-mining facility that's in, you know, the, the turkey, the turkey barns, as they're referred to, essentially just a, a roofed structure, uh, open-air roofed structure, I would venture to guess that there's probably not a lot of, uh, high-paying, quality jobs. The Applied Digital example, though, um, and I think Nick talked about it in the, in the last meeting, or the February meeting, there are some high-paying jobs, a lot of them, um, that are coming, uh, from that facility.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner Munson.
Nathan, when we're talking about the permit cost, you know, up to a million dollars, do you have a recommendation of, uh, I mean, I'm gonna ask Mitch, you know, the, kind of the same question, you know, what, for a million-dollar permit, what time and energy is, and work is invested by Burley County that we need to pay for? But what would be a fair permit fee? And I know that's probably a Nick conversation.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I like what you said, but I need answers to, you know, how to make it better. And so I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Munson, it's my understanding that special use, that permit fees in general are to offset the costs of staff time, of you all coming together, of, you know, um, time and, and staffing and all of that stuff. For the life of me, I can't believe that, um, a million-dollar special use permit fee, that, that there's that much staff time and meetings and all of that stuff built into a million-dollar special use permit fee. That seems like an exorbitant amount to me. To me, I would, I mean, I would defer to, to Mitch and, and to Nick to figure out what, what is involved in that. How much staff time, how much of your all-time is involved, um, in that process? And set the fee based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman.
Excuse me. Chairman? Um, I talked to Dakota Media Access, and Nick has to accept being a presenter. He keeps declining. So if he accepts being a presenter, he should be able to get online.
Sounds like he's in.
Oh, Commissioner Conley?
Well, I, when you mentioned the Williston data center, you mentioned it in a past tense sort of thing. But just last week, MDU was asking for an increase in fee specific to that data center for, I believe it was seven dollars and six cents, bringing the first request and the second request just under twenty-one dollars. So it's not a past-tensed argument. Now, I, I believe at least one other person in things we've, I've met with people that explain.
Center, he keeps declining.
I, I, I think I'm on here, I don't know if you can hear me.
Accepts being a presenter, he should be able to get online.
Sounds like he's in.
You guys can hear me?
Yeah.
Commissioner Conley?
Well, I, when you mentioned. So it's a present tense thing? And that, so. I don't know where to go with that since you stated it in a past tense form. It's still very real for, and when you're talking, it affecting all of the electric bills across the state. That's significant.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Conley, if, if I, if I created the perception that the Williston project is in the past tense, I apologize. I, I, I honestly, I don't know where it's at in terms of continuing to operate or, or what, or where it's at. I know the, 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 the increase you're talking about. What, what I would say, on the reverse side of that, the Applied Digital facility actually decreased rates for MDU provider, for MDU customers. And Nick can give you the, the number of, of what the, what the, what the decrease was for MDU customers, and they're looking to actually increase the decrease, um, in coming years as the facility gets up and running. So I, I think that, that's, I think, where, where you all come into play and where the county commission comes into play to make sure that the, the bad actors stay away and that the, the companies like the Applied Digitals of the world are the ones that we're, we're getting a serious look at. The problem becomes when we have ordinances that are overburdensome, that essentially just push them away and push everyone away, good and bad. We don't even get a chance to talk to the good ones. And that's where, and that's where we struggle at the Chamber EDC. That's where we struggle because when we're, when we're talking to some of these data center developers, and full disclosure, I don't know if they're good or bad when we're, when we're just in the preliminary talks with them. But when we hand them the, the draft ordinance, and they look at it and say, well, there's probably three or four non-starters in here for us, and walk away, it doesn't even get us a chance to talk to the good ones. And that's where I struggle.
Commissioner Zeroff.
So, um, two things for you, Nathan. So we've got data center Williston, data, data center Ellendale, they are both outside of town, okay? Ellendale, even today, is not a sprawling metropolis, okay? Um, it, it just, it isn't, okay? Burley County is the second-most populated county in the state, right? I mean, we've got our state capital here, we've got Mandan across the river. When you add everybody all in, okay? I think there needs to be some control because you're not talking, uh, you know, when you, when you're talking about going into Ellendale, one, as the crow flies, that facility is two miles out of town, okay? It is a quarter, maybe, maybe a half mile away from their facility to the closest residence. So, okay, we can, you know, ta- play tit-for-tat on how far back from resident, you know, from residential structures it needs to be. But at the end of the day, it is down in Ellendale, middle of nowhere, okay? So to, to say that, well, you know, they, you know, they want to be close to the infrastructure. They've already proven it twice that that's not really a deal-breaker, okay? Um, we, as far as economic development and stuff go, like Mitch was saying, I mean, we've got other industries that can serve the tax revenue as well. I mean, so you start talking about, yeah, land gets developed, you get tax revenue generation based off of the houses, all that other stuff. So it's, it's kind of what I'll say, leveling the playing field. If you want to come in and develop in Burley County, here are the rules, okay? Plain and simple. A second thing, when it comes to the million-dollar permit, quick question for Mitch, and I'll get back to you. So when you say project, are you talking about site development and building construction? Or are you talking about including the cost of all of the equipment that goes into this facility as well? Or are you just talk, or is that permit fee based off of just the taxable structure and land?
That's a good question. Building permits are based on all, all the construction of, the permanent construction.
So the HVAC, the plumbing, the.
Yeah, the, you know, it's.
In, in, in the building?
Yeah, I, it's, it's hard to determine the total cost of a project like that, I don't, for, for our permitting purposes. But I would say the hard cost, not the buying the property or anything like that, but the hard cost.
The hard, the hard cost of, of the physical construction.
And, yeah, and.
The, the computers, equipment inside, would those be included in?
I would say no.
Okay, so, that's, goes, goes back to my point. I really highly doubt you're looking at a billion dollars of construction into any of those facilities. We've got Dakota Carrier Network that, I promise you, that may be a billion-dollar facility when you start including all the equipment and the computers and the technology that's in it, but the, the physical structure itself and the development of the land and the parking lot, you're not talking a billion dollars that generates a million-dollar, uh, million-dollar fee. You're, you're, you know, you're probably looking somewhere in the neck of the woods, yeah, maybe, maybe a hundred thousand dollar, you know, a hundred thousand dollar, uh, fee, which I'll, I'll, I'll say, to, by the time you start adding in all of the time that, I mean, we are basically volunteering our time for, for the paychecks we receive for being here, at least the ones that are appointed to the commission. But if you're talking billing that, billing our staff out at what would be considered private entity standard billable rate, billing, billing Mitch out at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars an hour, and if he has two-hundred hours sucked into this thing just to, just for permit review on something like this and all of that stuff, okay, well, now we're talking, you're getting into forty, fifty thousand dollars of, of expense right now. So I don't think that a tenth of a percent is even, it, it's, it, it really does probably cover this, you know, and that's why it's a tenth of a percent, and it's not a fixed rate, because it, it's adjustable to the size and the scope of the project. When you start looking at a lot of your engineering and architectural fees for, for any construction, and we've got contractors sitting here, we've got people that have done a lot of that stuff, your engineering and architectural fees are five to ten percent of total project cost, typically. We're talking a minimal, minimal fraction of what they're gonna be just into the engineering and not, I mean, not even construction, just the engineering and the surveying and the architecture of everything. So I, I will push back on that comment, Nathan, about, you know, a tenth of a percent being egregious. I, I, I really don't think it is. Those, those costs for staff can add up, and, and everybody's time involved. And then if they have to hire consultants to, you know, for. And then if they have to hire consultants to, you know, for additional staff support, I, I think that is more than fair. So.
Mr. Chair. The, I, I don't want to interrupt your speaking, but the idea of those permits, the, um, it's not just for the current project or the effect of the current project, but it, it's basically for, for something like this, it's, it's, is, it's going to be basically a spot zoning. Doesn't have to be in an industrial center. It could be in an ag land, but it's zoned. And so you're creating a, in essence, a spot zoning, which is going to affect our future land use map, our comprehensive plans. And it, you're at the point where you almost need to create an overlay district for these, which are, to do all that and include that in your zoning, we'd have to hire consultants and, you know, people who are much smarter than me at planning for something like this because if we see one, we'll see many. And that's, that's, you know, one of the reasons.
That makes perfect sense. I would agree that the point one percent is really minimal. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Again, time limit fifteen minutes and please sign the roster and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, my name is Greg Owen with Capital Electric Cooperative. Manager of Engineering Services is my title. I don't have a lot of real hard and fast comments. I just had a couple of things, like Nathan mentioned, I haven't had a chance to review the latest draft of the ordinance. But I just want to commend everyone's input on this. I think this is a very pertinent topic and.
Again, time limit fifteen minutes and please sign the roster and state your name.
Going back in time, do I get to add, add more time to it? I guess in terms of Capital Electric's, as a co-op's perspective, since we serve the vast majority of Burleigh County, especially the rural areas, we're talking about some of these setbacks. It would be something definitely in our purview to, to consider. I guess I do like the idea of having different thresholds, the fifty megawatts above or below, or wherever that number lands at. We've had a number of different members ask about smaller sizes, how that would work, especially things like a grain site where they may be only utilizing their facility for one to two months of the year. How can they use that resource the rest of the year and help get some payback there? So I'll just let that be for now, but I appreciate that perspective. One thing about project costs, I just wanted to maybe mention for consideration. Of these scales, the fifty megawatts and above, a lot of these folks are bringing, they're going to take delivery at the transmission level and have their own substations, transformers and circuit breakers. There's, there's a lot of costs involved with that infrastructure. I don't know if that's part of what you'd consider the project for a permit fee, but that those would add up very quickly if that is part of it or if it's decided to not be part of it. Maybe something to consider there for clarification. I guess another thing I noted just in the comments, commentary so far, as far as generation on site, Capital Electric probably gets one to two requests per month on average for sizes we're talking here. Just, you know, out of the blue, haven't heard of these folks, but they're calling and looking for sites. But a lot of what they talk about is bringing their own generation to site first until the grid can catch up because it's, could be three to six years before anybody could get power delivery to this scale, to those sites. So it may not be just looking at it from a backup perspective. Some of these folks might be looking to use their own generation, whether it's to avoid peak charges or some demand response options, or just that's their only generation source for a period of time. So that would just be something I would maybe point out that. Again, I haven't seen that language, but if it's written in such a way that's only for backup or only for testing, there may be other considerations for that. But I guess just in respect to time, I just want to open up if, if there's any questions, I could stand for them here from a power provider perspective.
Any questions? Mr. Rich.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just a little concerned that these, the people that are appearing at the public meeting didn't receive the latest draft? Or was it, I mean, this is a public hearing. If we didn't post the latest draft, that could be an issue.
Mr. Chair. Marla, we're going to have to look into this, but we believe Marla sent a copy of this ordinance to Mary Singer to be put onto the site. That the site does not have that. It stops at the May twelve, March twelfth meeting. But the public hearing that's published in the paper ten days before this meeting states that a copy of this draft ordinance is available at our office. They couldn't find it. They certainly, they certainly have our email, our contacts. We would, we would have loved to send them a copy. We don't, this is bad. I, I apologize. But we're going to look into and see what happened because it's typically, they're always published online on, on, on our website page, a copy of it. I wish they were contacted. We would have sent you an immediate, immediately sent you a copy of it because that's not, we're not trying to hide this ordinance from anybody.
Mr. Rich.
Yeah, I just want to say what it says in the draft I have is that a generator use is limited to backup emergency use only. That's what's in the proposed draft I have.
Any other questions or comments? Any other comments? There you go, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the proposed ordinance?
Website page, a copy of it. I wish they were contacted.
Can you all hear me? I've got a, I can't hear anything through Zoom. I can only hear through the, through the website and it seems to be a minute delayed.
And the draft I have is that a generator use is limited to backup emergency use.
Yes, turn his volume down.
Any other questions, comments? Any other comments? Anybody else want to speak to the proposed ordinance?
We, we really can't hear you unless you speak into the.
Website page, a copy of it.
So it seems that the video is just delayed, what I hear on, on the website, and there's no audio or video through Zoom. So I'm going to try talking and hopefully this works out and it's going to be very hard for me to answer questions, I think. But I'll just go ahead.
Okay, just to, so you understand.
So in terms of this, this ordinance, I have to say first, I'm a little bit disheartened. At the February meeting that was going on, we had talked about, you know, waiting till post-session to, to work through this model ordinance. So it seems that the video is just delayed, what I hear on, on the website, and there's no audio or video through Zoom. So I'm going to try talking and hopefully this works out and it's going to be very hard for me to answer questions, I think. But I'll just go ahead.
Okay, just to, so you understand.
And so you understand this, this ordinance, I, I have to say first, I'm a little bit disheartened. At the February meeting that was going on, we had talked about, you know, waiting till post-session to, to work through this model ordinance. I think I might hear somebody now through Zoom.
Can you hear us okay?
I hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, this is Chair, Vice Chair Dale Patrick. Just to remind you that.
The audio is very broken.
We have only ten minutes, you have only ten to fifteen minutes, after which time we will then open it up for questions.
All right, I'm getting messages that I should try to talk again, but I can't hear you. So I'm just going to try. So I'll, I'll, I'll start over here. So a, at the February meeting, we had spoken about potentially waiting, or had spoken about waiting until post-session to revisit this ordinance. So there's, there's a couple of things I want to clear up that I, I heard some talk about. The draft ordinance that you all have there, it seems like, is something that's, that's very early. The League of Cities and the Association of Counties have spent very, very little time with us or with others on this. This is out and about in a few different counties and cities that are looking at it, but it's, it's very, very early. And I was, I was hoping that post-session, we'd be able to work through a very collaborative process to, to work through the ordinance and that eighty decibels, for example, is just a placeholder, but to be able to work through some of those things. I'll, I'll run through some of these items that I, I just took notes on during the, the meeting so far. To, to be clear, we agree there needs to be some controls. We, we don't want to be a burden on neighbors. We don't want to put anybody out who's, you know, lived in a place for a long period of time. In Ellendale, we, you know, we cited about point five seven, so a little bit more than a half mile away from a resident that's not often there. There is another resident that's about a half mile, but they've got a lot of trees, so it's a different situation. The, the, the permit fee that's been talked about, I think that the main challenge here is that it just needs to, it needs to be more clear as what project costs would be subject to this charge inside of an ordinance and also what things would get permitted. Basically, there's some very highly technical items inside of the buildings that are proprietary that we, we wouldn't want to put out into the world. And, and also there'd be very hard for the city, or the, sorry, in this case, the county, to really go through those things. So, you know, from, from my view, if that scope gets limited and then that fee becomes something more like a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars, you know, for a large project, I, I could understand how that, that may make sense. There was some talk about recording and putting in writing who's in the building. The, the challenge here is, in our case, we're the owner. In, in the case of somebody else being an owner, I think that the owner of the building and having contact information, you know, available for them makes a lot of sense. But you can't have the tenant information. The tenant could be a private organization. It could be D O D, it could be military, it could be something that you, you just can't have and it can't become part of any public records. But I do think it's reasonable to have a contact to provide you. In the case of some of our, our larger customers, you couldn't call them. There's not a number to call and if you did call them, they wouldn't talk to you. So, so we can't just be told, you have to give all this different contact information. It, it doesn't, doesn't really work. Some of this sound stuff that we, what I've seen in here comes out of California. We've seen that float around a little bit. I, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to make North Dakota into California. Certainly that's my view, but, but that's, that's just something I've seen. There was some talk about background level noise for thirty-two to thirty-five decibels. I, you know, I could see that at certain times of the year, in certain conditions, but measuring is tough because the winter, summer, spring and fall could all measure entirely differently in terms of ambient noise. So if, if somebody complains later, hey, the noise is different than you measured or more than you measured as, at the ambient level, it might just be because it's a different season. So would it be the requirement to have to measure, you know, every hour of every day for an entire year? And then report that back? Or what happens when one year is wetter or drier or windier or whatever, one year to the next and that, that has an impact? And, and what I want to say here about this is we don't want to impact people. You don't want us to impact people, but you also don't want to create an ordinance that's going to cause, you know, the police or the sheriff or some staff hired to run around with noise measuring devices just to run around and, and deal with complaints all the time because you've made something that's so complicated and very technical and hard to enforce, measure and, and really understand. And it's, it just becomes a huge challenge. So I think it has more to do with pairing the buildings in places that make sense. You know, don't put it directly next to a school, put it in an industrial area where somebody might not care or something like that. In terms of decommissioning, this has just got to go away. This is not an open pit mine. This is not somebody's destroying nature and putting something up. We're talking about very large buildings. You know, our buildings are about nine hundred thousand square feet apiece going forward. Even if, if we were a smaller, a fifty thousand square feet or a ten thousand square foot building, it's a building. Whether it's a turkey barn style metal shed that somebody might be able to use for storing materials in or it's a, you know, concrete building with two-foot thick concrete walls, I, I think it's irrelevant. Causing somebody to have to put up, you know, a security to say that they'll be able to decommission the building is just unreasonable. The buildings have value, whether they're a data center or something else later. You don't make somebody put up a decommissioning, you know, for someone's house. You don't make them do it for an office building or a hospital or something else. Why would you do it for a building like this? I understand you don't want it to be a blight, but that's, you know, an open pit mine, that, that's going to be a blight, not a concrete or a steel building. They have value at, at the end. And as far as, you know, having security, even as a publicly traded company, we end up tying up capital to put up security. If we have to put up a bond or something like that or a letter of credit, it's still putting, putting up capital and that, that can be prohibitive to people. Yeah, so the, somebody did mention something about the, the costs that M D U are going back for. That, that is a real issue. That has to do with some pancaking charges and some other transmission charges that they're getting. It's, it's really quite complicated. I'm happy to talk about that, not probably here since I can't answer questions. And then down in, in Dickey County, we'll, we'll pay somewhere around two point one million dollars in property taxes for our, our buildings over there and growing here in the, in the, and that's just the first, you know, couple of buildings that are first big building and the auxiliary buildings surrounding it. So, so we'll end up paying quite a lot of property taxes down there. And the assessments are, as, as I think Mitch mentioned, are on the buildings and some of the components, but, but much of the components, the computers, for example, are personal property. Those wouldn't get taxed. So there, there is a big tax revenue here. There is about three to three hundred and fifty employees that we'll hire. They are hiring paying jobs down there. There is a benefit there. We, we certainly did pick Ellendale, which is remote, but we picked it due to the electrical infrastructure that's there. But we're having to deal with a lot of issues in regards to housing and roads and other things that if we were in Burleigh County would be a different situation. We just have to find the guardrails here. So unfortunately, I'm out of town this week. I will be there next week, happy to visit with some individuals. But my hope here is that this can become a collaborative process. The legislative session is probably just a few weeks away from being done. And after that, the Association of Counties and the League of Cities and us and some other counties and cities are all anxious to go ahead and start working on, on this model ordinance to get it to a place where people can accept it. And my hope is that you'll take no action here today and instead, you know, work in a collaborative manner with a bunch of other folks around the state to get something really good to come out of all of this. I'll, I'll stop at that time and I still can't hear you, so I, I'm not sure what to do about questions.
Are you able to hear us, Nick?
No.
No. Yeah, we're going to, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A few comments. These data centers, we're not focusing on Nick's project. Let's, let's get that out in the open. I, these, to me, it sounds like he's done a fantastic job in Ellendale. I do appreciate his comments because we made some changes to the ordinance because of him. But we're looking at, at facilities that are over fifty megawatts in power that are going to be large. And they're difficult, they're challenged as a standard zoning planning model. They're difficult for, for Burleigh County to get their hands around because it's, particular site needs are difficult to meet. Essentially, this is spot zoning. If we change ag to industrial, I guarantee it's going to be spot zoning. And that's, that creates problems down the road. And that creates problems down the road for us. It is going to affect our land use map. It's going to affect our comprehensive plan, which all had to be changed. And, you know, from that, from these permit fees, that's how we can pay for a new comprehensive plan, and overlay districts that would include these. And that's where, you know, the people can be part of that, and they can consider it and see it. I mean, it's, our job essentially is to look at these regulations as needed to protect the community's health, safety, and welfare. That's what your job is when these permits come up. And if you don't have anything in the ordinance that has a guide rule or a guideline, then you're not doing your job. I'm not doing my job. It's the people of Burley County we're trying to protect. And these data centers are a new type of land use. We've never seen them in North Dakota. We've only have a couple of them here, and we're going to see more. And it's because the sheer cost of data, crypto mining, increases every day almost. And so it's, it's our job to protect these property owners and people who live here. And we're not focusing on any individual, any individual site. It does include in that ordinance a very specific line in the section of the design standards where additional conditions or specific allowances to this ordinance may be considered on review and approval of the special-use permit. That's up to you guys. If we have a good player like Nick, and he has a really, really good idea and a good plan, I mean, that's up to you guys to approve it. We're not going to be, you know, any kind of, just to turn it down because we don't like data centers. That's not, this ordinance allows them. And the cost of this permit is based on those development costs, and it doesn't include anything on the inside of the building, anything that is not locked down or damaged to the building if they take it out. It's just the hard cost. That's pretty much most of what I have to say on the comments, but it's, the idea is it's, this is spot zoning, and it's a challenge to our ordinance, it's a challenge to our zoning, a challenge to the people of Biller County. To you guys, I don't know. If we don't have an ordinance in place, we're at risk.
Mitch, I have a question about, you know, he addressed the decommissioning clause. Have you had decommissioning requirements for any other entity in the county?
We have them for wind towers.
So in other words, this is not entirely new?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so taking down some notes here and running some rough numbers. We have a current contractor in here, without getting into the nitty-gritty of things. For an industrial building is $250 a square foot, a decent average to build a decent-sized building, somewhere in there. Spitballing. Yeah. Okay, so $250 a square foot, $100,000, or sorry, 100,000-square-foot facilities and a cost of $25 million, okay? Your decommissioning bond is typically 1% to 2% of the total cost, okay? So you're looking at spending about $250,000 to $500,000 on that decommissioning bond, and your permit cost to Burley County at the .1% would be $25,000, okay? Again, we are talking about building a $25 million facility at that point. Now, that's 100,000 square foot. Nick said 900,000 square feet down in Ellendale. Okay, let's apply those numbers. We are looking at a $225 million facility, okay? Bond cost on that would be, eh, 2.25 to 4.5 million, okay? Again, 1% to 2% of the overall cost. Permit cost on that to Burley County would be $225,000. Okay. I understand these are really, really big numbers here that we're talking about when it comes to, I paid $250,000 for my house. Yep. For a project this size, we are talking, they're going to pay more in their contractor-upcharge fees to carry the risk on this project than they are in bond and permit fees. Period. I mean, so when it comes down to talking about all this stuff and it being cost-prohibitive and all that stuff, I'm sorry, okay. Burley County carries a 2.5% to 3% cost of entry. If that's going to stop you from coming here, don't come here. Like, that's kind of, that's, I'm sorry, that's my opinion. Secondly, let's start talking about the signage and the posting numbers and stuff outside the facility and who needs to be listed. Somebody brought up well sites. Okay, funny thing is, well sites, outside all those well sites, there's poster board signs, right? Mr. Patrick, Chairman, you're, every single one of those signs on every single one of those sites must list the owner, the operator, or the lesssee, and an emergency contact for that facility. Why we would require that for, why we'd require less for any other industrial facility? I don't know. It, to me, it's not egregious. It is, this is, these are contact information, pertinent contact information that the public needs to be aware of for any sort of these facilities, because when you start talking about going into, you know, facilities overheating and fires starting, who does a fire department, how does a fire department know who to even call unless that information is posted somewhere when they roll up on the site and you've got a 900,000-square-foot facility engulfed in flames? This is, it is a real-life safety issue. So I'm sorry, again, crime in your river. I digress.
Commissioner Metzen.
My challenge to that, Commissioner Zeroff, is it hasn't been challenged that it has to be on the sign. It's being challenged that it has to be on the application to start the process. When we approve a building permit for a shop condo, we don't know who the leasees of each unit are. That's my concern with this part. At the application process, we need to talk to the contractor, the building owner, absolutely. Now, when it's operational, you are correct. We need that information. Not a question at all. It's the application part that I have a problem with because, again, we don't know who's renting a shop condo. We only know the building owner, and that's the important part, not the lesssee.
Mr. Chair, I would 100% agree with that. We don't deal with the renter. We deal with the owner. And in the definitions that I added on this for the draft, does any person, agent, operator, entity, firm, or corporation have any legal or equitable interest in the property?
That's an owner. That's an owner.
Mr. Conley.
Well, go ahead, and then I can go.
I think what the complaint was, tenant information is what it was. Tenant information, some of these people, like you said, it might be the Defense Department that they're doing some sort of AI stuff with.
We don't want that. We're not interested in that.
But it's in this ordinance that it is the lesssee of the property. In the application requirements, number A, or letter A, it asks for the lesssee of the property.
That's also why we have appearances, one.
And on the applicability?
Or, right? Yeah. Says applicant or.
Now I agree. I missed the word "or."
I can cross out that lesssee. If that's what, it could be part of your motion.
That would be part of my motion. So A.
Can I follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Are you done, Mr. Metzen?
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
There were some legitimate concerns brought up this evening about this ordinance. I think if we pass it the way it is, we'll never have a data center. That's what our objective is. That's what's going to happen if this passes tonight just the way it is and the county commission approves it. The idea about the standby generators from Capital Electric, that was a good point. The standby generators can only be used for standby when they in fact maybe need them to get the operation starting before they get proper power to the data center. That's what the Capital Electric guy said. So that's problematic. The sound, detailed sound stuff, I don't know, what was his name, Nick? Said something about, it looks like California information. When I look at it, I'm going, "What does this all mean?" You helped me a bit, though, but it seems overly complicated, overly restrictive. We can have a decibel limit, but all that other stuff, I don't even get it. And the decommissioning, you mentioned wind towers. Okay, well, there's a reason for decommissioning bond for wind towers because there's no other use for it. But if you had a building, a concrete building, or some other building, someone else would want to buy it. So I don't know why we'd need to do decommissioning. You might do something with the power lines or something to that effect, but the buildings themselves. And the other thing, the last thing, you know, was mentioned about the plan with the Association of Counties, Association of Cities, League of Cities, getting together and putting together comprehensive model ordinance. That seems to make more sense because they'll bring in people that actually are experts in this field and maybe can address some of the issues that were brought up tonight. So I'm reluctant to support it the way it is.
Commissioner Risch, before we go, I'd like to just clarify that those different decibel levels are based on different types of sounds. For instance, a whirring engine might be up here, whereas a car engine will be down here. That's what that's about. Okay, Commissioner Metzen.
Two points to Commissioner Risch's comments. Number one, I'm going to give Mitch a lot of credit. He's done a lot of work on this, and he's researched a lot of other ordinances to create this. So I don't want to take that away from Mitch. The second part of it is, my motion back in February, that's why I told you all I was mad at you this morning, or this afternoon, my motion was for this to be reviewed after session so that we could give the League of Cities and the Association of Counties time to get together to write that model ordinance. That was the main purpose of my motion, to push this out to June. Now, I'm going to also back up Mitch a lot here. If we don't have an ordinance and someone comes, we don't have a chance to even approve or deny it because we don't have an ordinance. So I'm torn. I need to back up Mitch, and we need to protect our residents, so we need an ordinance. I wish this would have stayed as per my motion, and we had a chance to talk about it in June rather than today. I wasn't here last month, and you went around me. I'm just kidding. Yeah, sure.
Just to explain, I think the reason that it was brought off the table was because there's been some interest. Is that correct, Mitch?
There's interest, and I did get a copy of the draft ordinance. Their draft ordinance. And as you can see on some of these areas.
Their draft ordinance isn't even.
It's a nonstarter from Burley County. I mean, they have things that are, sentences that say, "Not limited to such examples." The other one is design standards. You'll see setback 2,100 feet. And the completion of the construction and updated noise story will be provided to the city of a decibel level of not more than 80.
80, yeah. That's a nonstarter for me, too.
These are things that, if we're going to wait till that long, we are at risk, but...
I would rather they not sent you anything.
Well, this has been adopted by multiple counties in the state. This is not out of the blue. And we're not trying to stop data centers from coming to Burley County. It's part of doing business here. You want to come here to do it, I mean, apply for it. But it's to protect the safety and public welfare of Burley County residents that are going to come up to this meeting. When we have a public meeting on a project of 600 megawatts or 685 megawatts, I guarantee you're going to have people here not wanting it. So you're going to be in the crosshairs of trying to figure this one out.
Commissioner Conley.
Commissioner, Chair and Commissioners, what Commissioner Rich mentioned as far as the generator, that since he took half the portion out of it, I would say that line could possibly be eliminated because the very question of what we brought up in Williston, the engineer brought up that there are peak times to where there's a significant draw on electricity, so they would run the generators in order to offset some of that peak load. Now, that makes sense because then there would be a, if they're generating their own energy, to be sustainable during that peak time. Now, we're not spinning that energy load to where MDU is asking for rate increases. And maybe that's part of the answer to that question that we've been struggling with for so long.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Chair, I agree. Generators, I mean, again, we go back to the difference, different applicable conditions can be applied to this. If they want to run generators during the day if they got a power shortage, why should we not, I mean, they're going to lose data, they're going to lose money, and why should we stop that? But if you've got 60 generators that are three megawatts apiece, that each create 80 decibels of noise, unless they're inside that building, you're going to be hearing them. And that's what we're talking here. This is the level that we are talking about here. And that's, we're not looking at a 15-megawatt data center, or even a 10-megawatt. These are large facilities that can come to you and they say, "Well, we're going to run our generators every day now," and you can do nothing about it. And it's kind of, well, we're going into the unknown on some of this stuff. We don't have examples, we don't predict. But I would like to respond to Mr. Rich about the concrete buildings. Decommissioning is not to tear down a quality building. That's not, that's the reason for a decommission. Decommissioner to take down the buildings that are not valuable, that are not considered usable, that are considered unusable. And it's not to tear down a $75 million building just because we don't want it there anymore. It's, if these buildings are going to create spot zoning, and they leave, they can also create blight, and they also can create problems. And that's where we're at issue here, is we're not looking to tear down a very expensive building to build. We're not, that's not part of the decommissioning. It's for unwanted structures that cause blight, like a turkey building that they put together over in Ellendale. I didn't, you know, I've just seen aerial photos of it. Probably a pretty good building, but do we want to have that as an empty building facility that we issued a special-use permit for? We'll get blamed for that every time they look at that.
Commissioner Risch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mitch, wouldn't the decibel limits apply to the standby generators as well? I mean, as long as they're under those decibel limits, they'd be okay?
Yeah.
So what's the difference when they run them?
We don't know where they're going to be. Are they going to be inside the facility? We don't care.
As long as the decibel is below our standards, it should be fine.
We don't know that, though.
Well, if it's above the standards, we're going to tell them to stop, right?
We're trying to prevent problems before they happen.
Sure.
That's, we're not trying to eliminate them from using it. We're trying to consider these things when somebody comes up to this podium and asks you guys to approve their special-use permit.
Commissioner Zeroff.
And back on that decommissioning plan, too, it's not necessarily tearing down the building, but it's, okay, the company goes belly up, they have a 900,000-square-foot facility packed full of essentially material, a lot of material that'd be considered hazardous waste, that the county now owns because they quit paying their property taxes and everything reverted back to the county, and it's basically abandoned property. So then it'd be at county cost to dispose of 900,000 square feet of disposable, or of potentially hazardous waste and all that other stuff. So again, it's not necessarily to tear down the building, but even that decommissioning plan would be make that building in a, or return it to a sellable format, you know, because nobody's going to pay more than a dollar for a building that they walk in and they go, "Oh, boy, I'm walking into $3.2 million of a landfill fees."
It could be made out of a Connex box, too. They're up in Williston building them out of Connex boxes.
Right. Mr. Conley.
Yeah, I would say, as far as, kind of like you mentioned with your processes and things, as far as the names and that, clean, like, the owner and the applicant to coincide with those, and that option five, leave the decibels in so you have that measurement, but take the line five out pertaining to the generators, just so you have flexibility to grow into that space that may impact. It has that flexibility to where you could possibly limit the impacts to all of the citizens in the area. And then... And then forward it on to the commission so you get that structure in place. It can always come back as an amended piece. Would be my thoughts.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Streifel. Are we past the point of temporary moratorium that we could recommend the county does to protect the Burleigh County citizens until we can get something that everybody is in, well, not everybody's going to agree on anything, but that we can take the time to do the work and get the people who want to speak and sort these things out the right way? Are we past that point?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Streifel, we, there are no moratoriums on data centers in Burleigh County.
Are we past the point of doing a temporary moratorium to protect the citizens until we can get...
I didn't write one up, but, I mean, it's possible, but that thought is a good topic. I want to comment, reply to Mr. Commissioner Conley is that the, I want to point you all guys to item 18 in section three. Additional conditions or specific allowances to this ordinance may be considered. These are, this ordinance is primarily, I wanted to write this ordinance as site-specific. In other words, it can be flexible enough for any kind of data center application.
You know, Mitch, you said that, are you still getting questions or inquiries about...
Not every day, no, no.
Okay. When was the last time you had one of those?
Oh, two weeks ago.
So maybe it is time that we move ahead with at least, at least a partial, I mean, as you pointed out, Mitch, in 18, that it can be considered review and approval of special use permit, and we could modify the ordinance later if we had to.
Yeah, if we get a good, if we get a good model ordinance from the League of Cities, we can certainly add some of the parts to this.
At least we would have something on the table.
Yeah, we can always modify.
Commissioner Conley.
So, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mitch. I appreciate it, Chair, Commissioners, Mitch. With that in there, since that's a point, and that was brought up, and that's a key rub in this whole Williston discussion, not all data centers being the same, if you want to leave five in, say additional conditions, and then maybe in parentheses, including the stipulations of use per the, like, the generators, backup. So that kind of highlights, we want to make sure we talk about that topic pertaining to these buildings every time, where the generator conversation's there as we try to learn how we limit the negative impacts to the citizens overall, if that makes sense.
That's up to the board if you want me to include that in that specific allowance.
Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Streifel, did I say it right?
Yep.
Streifel made a good point. If we just enacted or passed a moratorium till we meet with these groups, the counties, the cities, the players, and then come up with an ordinance later in the year, and we'd protect the county residents between now and then.
Mr. Chair, I did not, have not created a moratorium. I'd have to create that to send this to you for next month, and then that would have to go to the county commission, so it's going to be into May again.
Mr. Munson?
Well, no, go ahead.
And let me add to that, Chair, Commissioners, Mitch, in all actuality, that direction should come from the commission first, wouldn't it? Because it is a different ordinance, or would it come through this? Which direction?
A moratorium?
Yeah.
A moratorium would not be an ordinance.
Okay.
A moratorium is a resolution that would be approved by the county commission, but it needs to be reviewed here first and recommended with their approval.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We have a moratorium coming up in the next section of our agenda, so...
Well, and how the timing is falling, it's all kind of going to happen in the same time span.
But we don't know when we're going to get a model ordinance. We have no idea.
Legislative session's winding up, or winding down.
Commissioner Munson?
Commissioner Conley, you're right, but, you know, so whether it's, we see it in May here for a moratorium, and the commission in June, if we would have left this on the table until June, we're all about the same timeframe. If we pass this ordinance today with the modifications that we're talking, at least we would have an opportunity to have an ordinance in place by May that can be amended, you know, and I think that's the important part that we need to consider. Mitch has done very well at explaining this, that if we don't have this, anybody can come in and do whatever they want, and we can't stop them. We can't control it, we can't, we can't do anything with it. And that's the part that makes me a little nervous. Now, there's pieces in here I don't like, and I, if I make the motion, there are pieces in here that I will change in that motion, but I think it's important that we get this to the county commission sooner than later.
Any other comments? Commissioner Zurov.
So, again, to drive home the point that this, even though we would push this through and pass it, this isn't the be-all, end-all, there are stipulations within the ordinance where variations can be made. One, two, variances can be requested by the applicant at the time of application. Three, if they really, really don't like this, instead of rezoning into industrial, they can rezone into a PUD, and they can literally write their own and come before us and say, "This is what we want to do, this is what we feel is reasonable," and we can have that battle with them at that point in time. So this isn't like closing the door on development, it's not anything, it's, you know, because, again, they are going to pretty much have to come back through and rezone property anyways. So whether they go through industrial zoning or a PUD, not much difference, right? So...
Commissioner Munson?
One more comment, and I'll put my other hat on as a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I don't need an ordinance that is a stop-all for them to even look at us, you know, that's the other part. I don't want it to be to the point where people look at this and go, "We're done." We need to be able to regulate them, we need to be able to make sure it fits within our county. The reason I love the special use permit, they all come here, and they all go to the commission for all of the final details, and that's the part that I love about the special use permit.
Any more comments? None?
I will move that we accept this ordinance with the, with modifications. In applications 1A, I need to strike the verbiage. Must also identify on the application, the applicant or lessie of the property and the operator of the data center. Also, that same language is in item 36. Let me see if I can find that again to make sure I'm speaking correctly.
Yes, it is. It's in 36.
Yep, so it's in that section, I want to strike that out.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Munson, what, what section was that?
So, three design standards, line six, applicant name, the applicant must also identify the applicant contact information for the owners of the property, I don't have an issue with that, but the occupant or lessie of the property and the operator of the data center. So that last part of that line, I would like stricken.
Mr. Chair, that's for a building permit. That's not for the special use permit.
No, I get that, but it's still listing the lessie, you know...
Okay, yep.
We don't, we don't ask for the lessies of a shop condo. I don't think it's right that we ask for it in a permit. I know this has not been a lot of conversation, but I would move, in my motion, to move the distance back to a half mile instead of a mile. And I would, for this motion, eliminate the item K, the financial security, all of K. That's it.
Second.
Second by...
I appreciate that, so we can have some discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Munson, and second by John, Commissioner Risch. Is there any discussion?
I, yes, Mr. Chair. I fully appreciate Commissioner Zurov's comments about having a possible wasteland of property that becomes Burleigh County's issue. I really do. If I owned a half a billion dollars' worth of computer equipment in a building, I'm going to take that out before I leave. Depending on the age, but that's a property that I would take when I'm leaving.
If you can, if there's not a court order against it, if there's, if you're not so bankrupt that, again, I'm going on what-ifs.
Absolutely. And I may be proven wrong, and when we get to the commission, they put it back in. I just, I want to get this ordinance for Mitch's group to have.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Streifel. I would be vehemently opposed to the half mile. We worked really hard to get that extended to the mile. I'd like to see it stay at the mile, or I can't support it.
Any more comments?
Here you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the half mile is reasonable. The city draft ordinance was four tenths of a mile. Half mile, that's what they have down in Ellendale. I don't, in our decibel ratings that are pretty restrictive, I think, I think we're going to be okay with a half a mile.
Mr. Chair, and I would agree, the decibel, leaving those decibels where they're at as they're written, whether the generators are running, whether it's the operation of the facility, that's what protects our residents the most. And that's, that's my, that's why I moved it back to a half.
Mr. Risch. I'm not really sure with everything you mentioned. Did you mention the standby generator? Because Capital Electric said they may have to run them at startup.
I didn't include that in my motion because of the decibel levels. So if they're running and only at 45 at night...
Okay, that's fine with me, yeah.
But again, Mitch also mentioned the fact that in that application process, if they came in and said, "We need a year of running generators to get us operational until Capital Electric shows up," then in the special use permit, we can modify that plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, but I think the way it's stated is it's, generator use is limited to backup and emergency use only, is the way it is.
But in the special use permit, if they came in here and said, "We need a, we need a special use for a year of the generators," then when they're here in front of us, we can approve or deny that part of it.
We could do that with the mile, too.
We certainly could.
Any other comments?
I have one about the noise level. If we're going to reduce that to a half a mile, I think we need to really look at the 45 decibels for those existing properties along, along the property. Because, as I told you before, the background level in North Dakota is right around 35 Especially in rural areas. And these, these, these facilities are located in rural areas.
Commissioner Conley.
Listen to enough of these meetings and things, I would say, keep it at the mile if the county at, I mean, you're in on that. If you want to change it at that level, because it's the final say, go with that. It's, wouldn't be the first time that a county or a city commission overturned what a planning and zoning did. We just had one on Tuesday. And that, but on that item 18, just because of the highlight and people reaching out in their private discussions, because of that MDU charge being on there, if you could just add, like, a review, like, generator use review, and then you can keep five in the ordinance. So both of them have a presence, but because that's a hot-button topic that is in the papers that is out there, I think it's important that we say we're going to elevate that conversation every time it comes up as you vet the process. Because that's a legitimate charge. Every citizen in the state is looking at a $20-plus charge for an energy bill that they're not using.
Right. Mr. Zurov.
Yeah, I, there's no way I can support that without including the financial security. Absolutely not. That is, to me, any reputable company that's looking, that coming in sees that as a cost of business, period. It's, it's, to not include something like that, I, you're going to be almost inviting people to use this area as a testing ground. And, yeah, we started up, doesn't work, whatever, we just lose 40 Connex boxes and walk away from it, right? I don't think so. That's, I really struggle with not including financial security on it, and as Mitch stated, everybody else is requiring it. So if we've got other counties that are requiring financial security and we're not, that's going to further bolster, we're going to be the proving ground or the test subject or whatever, and I have no interest in subjecting people of Burleigh County to being test subjects for potential dumping grounds for electric facilities or whatever.
I think Commissioner Zurov brings up a good point, because, for instance, we're going to have, what, 460,000 gallons of diesel fuel on site?
Hazardous material.
Hazardous material. Included in those, the computer systems they're going to have are very hazardous materials. They're going to have to be dealt with by somebody. So...
I would agree with that, too. If the county, the county commission wants to take that off, great.
Yeah, but I'm not going to...
I agree, I agree.
Commissioner Risch.
I just can't imagine somebody would invest this kind of money and abandon it. I mean, I can see you can go through bankruptcy, but they're going to invest this kind of money and just abandon it?
Go to the oil fields.
Yeah, right.
Travel out west. I'm telling you. There's, there's, there's millions of dollars of equipment sitting in fields rotting away. I mean, millions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I, I will amend my motion. We will leave K in, and I appreciate Commissioner Streifel's comment that if we leave it at a mile, but we can move it to a half at the special use permit, I'm okay with that, too. So I would amend to a mile, and I would amend to leave K in.
Are you in agreement with that, Commissioner Risch?
I'll second it, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Marla, would you repeat the motion, and we'll be referring this to the county commission?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you? We'll help you.
Okay, the motion is to approve the amendment to Article 8 data centers with the following write-off, strikeout? No. What would you want to call it?
Modification.
Okay, modification. Okay, amend Article 8 data centers with modifications of striking all the verbiage in 1A, which is applicant, I want to make sure I get the right one. 1A, applicant name and contact information, applicant must also identify on the application, the occupant or lessie of the property.
Just the last, just the last part, the occupant or lessie of the property. That's the only part.
And the operator of the data center.
Okay, I got that.
And that would be the same on six.
On number six?
Yep.
Okay. Because we're not going to remove that all the way, right?
Right, section three, item six.
Okay.
It also says it on, under decommissioning plan, it says the occupant or lessie of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but I don't think that's, I think the decommissioning plan, it is the responsibility of the original applicant, or if different, the owner of record of the property, the occupant or lessee. I think that needs to stay there, because they are responsible for the decommissioning.
Right.
I just don't want that information on the applicant when they're coming to talk to Mitch.
Are you going to hold them responsible if they're not on the paperwork?
Well.
This is the decommissioning plan, not the application.
Right, right.
So you can leave them on the decommissioning plan, but not, but pull them off.
They will be listed, it's just not on the original application coming to the county.
Okay.
Okay. So now it's back to, we're basically striking half of the verbiage in 1A to have it say applicant's name and contact information, and operator of the data center. You want that off there?
Yep.
Okay. So we just want application and name and contact.
Yep.
Applicant name. All right. And item three, I've got item three, strike number six, but we're taking that off in the design standards?
Again, we're just removing the occupant or lessee of the property and the operator of the data center. That's what we're removing from six.
Okay. And?
That would be all my changes, because I agreed with Streifel on leaving it at a mile, and I agreed with Zurov on taking out the.
Leaving.
Leaving in the decommission.
Okay, can you just?
So we really only have those two changes?
Yep. I modified it, you seconded.
Okay. All right. I'm going to have to watch this 12 times. But, okay. So I've got it now. We're approving approval of the amendment to Article 8 data centers, and we're striking the verbiage after the owner-operator. So applicant name and contact information, that can stay on item A. We're striking applicant must also identify on the application, the occupant or the lessee of the property, and the operator of the data center. That's going to be struck. Okay? The decommissioning plan is staying. So. That was the only change that it looks.
On six, right.
Yep, that's the only change you're, you're making, is that one then, because you took out, you, you're keeping item K in, which was eliminated that first time, and you're keeping in the decommissioning plan. So there we're good? And that's it? Anything else? Okay. A yes vote means you approve of the motion, a no vote means you do not, and the motion is to make the changes.
Hand it forward to the County Commission.
Yep, with the, do pass with the changes. Yep. Okay. Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
No.
Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, passed E to 1.
Mitch, can I get a couple hour, two hours next week to talk about the financial security thing, prior to going to Commission? Okay, thank you.
Other business? Yes, we have item 5-1, best moratorium. Mitch?
Mr. Chair, this is a moratorium, consider a moratorium for best facilities, battery energy storage system. The Planning Department has taken notice of potential for Burleigh County to be identified as a preferred location and development of battery energy storage systems, and finds it necessary to develop a zoning ordinance amendment to establish a framework, excuse me, for these best facilities. There is a copy of a draft ordinance, draft resolution. The, it's fairly simple, straightforward. There is no length of time on the moratorium, but I'm working on this draft. This is for large, large facilities. Again, BES system can be challenging to zoning and development in Burleigh County. The, the energy storage land uses must meet the level of risk and degree of regulation needed to protect our community's health, safety, and general welfare. The moratorium is needed because BES are a new type of land use. We're not, we have never seen one in Burleigh County, and most of North Dakota as well. The ordinance disordnance will take time. The ordinance will not affect battery, battery energy storage systems that are behind this, behind the meter. In other words, if you have battery systems for your solar system on your roof, that's not part of this. The ordinance is for utilities, utility scale facilities. Utility scale facilities defined in the Century Code is designed for operation as a grid resource and capable of 5 megawatts or more of rated power capacity. This is, anything below 5 megawatts is not affected by this. The, these battery systems, because the lithium batteries are coming down in price, there, there, there's going to be more, I believe, some more investment into these type systems. They're tied to solar farms. As you remember, last month, we approved the solar farm ordinance, and it was just approved this weekend at the County Commission. So you're going to see best facilities next to this. And, you know, they contain high amount of batteries. They're lithium batteries, lithium nickel, lithium nickel manganese, all different kinds of batteries. They are prone to thermal runaway. The, the safety risks are predominant in these lithium batteries, and that thermal runaway can cause an explosion or fire. I can use, the, the only best facility I know of in North Dakota, the, the one in Flickertail, it's in Dickey County, that's, that facility is capable of 150 megawatts, the, the best facility alone. So there's enough batteries in that, in that facility to create 150 megawatts. Large amount. So they're, they're basically 300, this is on their side, there's 308, 318 containers, Connex boxes, that are 20 foot in length, 20 foot apart, and nine feet in, in height. They're Connex boxes, basically. They're retrofitted to put these batteries in. And there's 318 of them. So these are what we're looking at as the best facility. The ordinance, I, I've started working on a draft. It should provide for safety and first responder standards, financial securities for the decommissioning plans, setbacks, lot size density as an industrial standard, noise, visual impacts, that sort of thing. You'll remember that our solar farms are okay in ag. So this is almost an industrial standard for agricultural properties. So we definitely need a special use permit for these. The only standard that I would refer to for building these would be the NFPA 855, that's the National Fire Code, it's Protection Fire Code. Because, I mean, if you're talking Connex boxes, building codes don't affect them. Unless you change, you know, these relocatable buildings, they call them, unless you change or alter the engineering of these things, you're really not looking at anything. And so it's, if we've got solar farms coming, you're going to see best facilities, too.
Mr. Chairman Mitch, hey, I, I think you explained it well, but when I read the resolution, it says, "moratorium on the development of all battery energy storage systems." It doesn't refer to the large ones. But is BES, B-E-S-S, is that a, is there, is that a definition? Is that, that explains only large ones when you refer to BES?
No, the, I should.
Battery energy storage system, yes.
Yeah, I could explain in there that these are utility scale best.
Right, right, which makes sense.
I could add that in there, yeah.
Okay, okay. Because we, at, at our last meeting on solar, there was a businessman here in town that develops these solars, and he's got batteries, and seems like he's doing a pretty good job for some of these operations of Bismarck, and I don't want to put him out of business, a guy like that.
Right, but you're not talking about putting a guy like that out of business. This is going to be, like Mitch said, utility scale, so you're talking about somebody like Capital Electric or MDU coming in and saying, well, you know, to level off our risk on the grid and all this other stuff, you know, we're going to, we're going to bank a bunch of energy so we can sell it to Texas.
It says all battery storage systems is what, what the resolution currently says. So I, I think having that verbiage in there.
Yep, I'll define it as utility scale best facility.
Sure.
Over 5 megawatts, or?
Whatever.
We shall see.
Move to approve what the modifications mentioned.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on. Marla?
Okay.
And of course, forward this to the County Commission.
Okay. I just, I have a question. Does this moratorium need a, a public hearing, or can it go directly to the County Commission? Or is it?
I think it goes right to the county.
Right to the county?
Yep.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the moratorium on B-E-S-S facilities.
With, with that one change?
With the one change, which is to describe it, right?
Yep.
Describe it. Okay. All right. The motion is to approve the moratorium for B-E-S-S systems, facilities, with the change to spell out what B-E-S-S stands for.
No.
No.
The size is just.
The size?
Utility size.
Utility size. Utility size. Okay. All right. So, the, a yes vote means you approve, no vote means you do not. Okay. Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
And Vice Chair?
Yes.
Approved. Unanimate.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.